Or good morning or good evening, depending on from where you are joining. Thank you. Thanks for coming back for this afternoon session of the special meeting. And we have for this afternoon with us a number of colleagues from the Secretariat to take us through this workshop on the harmonized system. But before we get there, we realized that this morning was very interesting, but unfortunately a little rushed at the end. And we wanted to, and I talked to the chair, who unfortunately has other engagements this afternoon, but she has asked me to open the floor very briefly to see if there are, there is first of all, any complimentary information the presenters would like to provide if, since they were a bit rushed at the end. And then also if there are any other interventions from other delegations, questions, these can be questions to the presenters for the two parts of session two, or more interventions and their observations. Keeping in mind that any inputs we have today will help towards the drafting of the Good Practice Guide on commentating, where we are very fortunate to have seven inquiry points who have volunteered to work with the Secretariat. So I would just like to open the floor for any further inputs, reflections, questions, before we move on to session three. Thank you. Yes, Bexy from the US.
Thank you, Sarah and everybody. I wanted to mention that the last part of the slides I couldn't cover, but I just encourage you to see the last one and talks about the positive developments that we see from commenting activity. There are some examples there that point out to some of the replies, the positive replies that we receive, and they're very helpful in terms of addressing our concerns and resolving issues before escalating and, you know, the need to bring to the trade concerns arena. And another point that I didn't mention or didn't have the chance to talk extensively, but it has been covered before, is related to how important or what important element that facilitates engagement by stakeholders is to point out to criteria for filtering, and that has been discussed already. So from the point of view of the experience that we have at the Department of Agriculture, using the inquiry point and our, also our internal coordination, we have some criteria that we develop for filtering, because as countries recognize that there is a need for filling up that gap, countries that notify a lot and others that have not notified, imagine if the numbers of notification increase, the need for setting that criteria and filtering is even greater. So we have some criteria that points out to the economic impact of the measures. It has to be above $1 million of impact for us to take a look at notifications and comment on them. But there are certainly other factors that are taken into account, such as systemic impact, industry interest, the future interest in certain markets, et cetera. So these two items, thank you.
Thank you very much for these very useful additions. And once again, apologies for having rushed you, but I think the presentation is already up. So even during the course of the week, you can maybe engage with any interested delegation. They have further queries. Yes, I think Peru has liked to have the floor, please.
Si, muchas gracias.
Thank you so much, Sarah. First of all, I'd just like to point out that Peru is delighted to be part of this group that will be working on this manual. And I'd like to briefly comment on the importance of this for Peru. The comments process is very important as we will be receiving feedback, points of improvement with international standards, the impact of measures from the different points of view of all parties. There will be, it will allow for an improvement in the means of communication, as there are suggestions as to changes in format and comments on substance, and items that we may have overseen when we were working on our regulations. So this will allow us to work on the different matters that are of interest to the various parties, given the impact of the measure. In the case of Peru, having a good relationship with all entities is absolutely fundamental in terms of socializing the comments and receiving the necessary feedback. The point of contact, TBT, is in Peru, the Ministry of Tourism that I work for. And the team is very small, there are only two people working on notifications received. And on the basis of statistics that we work on, we work on more developed reports for some notifications, so that we can send them out and receive comments. These entities are our main allies, the dissemination of information, depending on the topic of the notification. In the case of Peru, there are two ways of carrying out, well, of sending out the comments. Sometimes they are handed over directly by the parties interested to the focal point. And the other way is that we sent it from focal point to the focal point that sent it. Ultimately, the person responsible for sending out the information for comments is the regulator in Peru. However, as focal point, we do ensure follow-up and we ensure that we refer to commitments under the TBT agreement. Lastly, I would like to seize this opportunity to ask Australia whether I understood correctly from their explanations that comments are only sent through the point of notification, or are firms able to send the comments directly to the other point of notification? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Peru, and thanks also for volunteering for the guide. Maybe we'll quickly turn to Australia before we move on to the next comments.
Thank you, Peru, and thank you, Sarah, for passing to me. In answer to your question, we have a very strict requirement saying that industry regulators could not send comments directly, and they may choose to do so. However, we do try and encourage them to do it through the inquiry point. And the reason for this is we think it's a useful way to reaffirm that the inquiry point is that consistent point of contact and also ensures that we have visibility over that exchange. We don't have a formal rule in place that says they can't, we just prefer it to be that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Clarification, I think we have Singapore.
Thank you. We would first like to first thank the presenters for a very useful and interesting presentation. Several parts of the regime or practices or domestic policies are quite sort of different with Singapore's experience. Yeah, so for us, I think largely one of the main deviation is that many of the comments we receive, we respond directly by our regulator authorities, quite similar to this case for Peru. In that regard, I'm actually quite interested to learn and understand better about the kind of coordination, whether it's institutional structures or timelines in terms of coordinating with regulators, sort of get a reply out in a timely manner and also in a comprehensive manner. But I guess we can sort of have a further discussion during the committee's discussion of the best practices guide as it's being developed. One of the questions that I actually have for the speaker is that, based on the presentation, there seems to be a lot of coordination in terms of like the receiving of comments and the drafting and preparation of comments. I would like to know if there is any TBT committee recommendations or decisions, for example, like timelines of like, when members are encouraged to provide, I guess, six months of comment period, would that be sufficient for your domestic coordination and preparation of comments? And I guess like just now I was hearing from the US speaker that she also does with like assessment of like the impact before they decide whether on the approach. So that does sound like there's a lot of preparation involved. So I'm just wondering whether like, do you have any challenges or key challenges? Or you think that there are certain decisions in the WTO committee that we could better work on? Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if any speakers or the delegations wish to react to the comments from Singapore. You, Luis.
When I mentioned in my slides about timelines, I was referring to our inquiry point in particular, the time that they devote to review comments when they receive them is they review it 24 hours and they act on submission of them. If they provided that information, it's enough there in accordance to the guidelines. Another timeline that I mentioned related to the work of our inquiry point is that the request of sending the comments two days at least before the comments are due to country to allow enough time for processing them. There are other more substantive timelines that for that, we, the guidelines in particular, refer to the recommendations of the committee, because they are developed in the recommendations of the committees, such as, for example, the recommended 60 to 90 days for a comment, as a comment period, a reasonable interval as well. Other items that are important when drafting comments, such as the international standards context, it is developed under the recommendations of the committee, the 2000 decision on setting international standards and others. So those were the reference that I had there that are included in our guidelines. But we will be happy to continue discussing, and I don't know if Marianne would like to add to that. Thank you.
Maybe if Australia is again responding to the specific question and then we move to Canada.
Any interest of time, I'm happy to leave my comments.
Thank you, Sarah. We also wanted to thank all the presenters for their time this morning and their very informative presentations. We did take a lot of good notes and we'll bring some of this information and best practices home to our inquiry points colleagues. One comment we had was with respect to Eping. And in your presentation, Sarah, you present very effectively the various functions of Eping and what they entail. One question which is still confusing, at least me, and I don't know if it's other people's as well, but I wonder if it would be useful for the Secretariat to prepare a short document, perhaps in a table format, which would outline the different functions of Eping that are allowed to the different audience and those that have various credentials. So I think I have in mind, so the general public first, there are WTO delegates that have credentials, and then we have the, our inquiry points who have admin privileges. So at least from my perspective, it would be useful to have maybe a rundown of the different functions and what the, these different public or audiences have in terms of access and privileges. Otherwise, yes, again, thank you very much for the session this morning.
Thank you. Take good note, and indeed, I have to also say this has been evolving, and that's why it has been sort of sometimes for us to track down, because we had the old Eping alert system side by side with the notification submission system, which were two different systems with different access rights. Then we merged it with other tools as well, and it has evolved. But I think now we are at a moment where we've sort of stopped fiddling, hopefully for a while, until we change it again. And maybe for the next meeting, by the time of the next meeting, the latest we can add a little information note and circulate it as a document, so that it's more easily accessible. Thank you for the good suggestion, and indeed, that's probably right time to do that right now. Thank you. I think we have the UK.
Thank you, thank you, Sarah, and thank you for the opportunity to come back as well with some comments. We feel this, this has been really useful, this morning session and this afternoon hopefully as well. And we took several notes, I think it's a good way to start TBT week on this very insightful experience sharing. We don't have any specific questions for now, but we just wanted to add a little bit, and now I'll try to be concise from our perspective, as for us, it's been really useful to hear from others as well. And one of the challenges that we do face is when we submit questions to inquiry points, sometimes these go unacknowledged. And I think other members have, say, raised similar points in the past as well. So it can take quite a long, a long time to receive replies. And from our perspective, acknowledging received is useful as members can sort of be assured that their questions have been picked up. And this also enables us to have appropriate and adequate follow-up on when things are raised in TBT. In the UK inquiry point, we do try our best to respond promptly to inquiries. We try to keep it within a month, unless exceptional circumstances require a bit, a bit longer. And then a bit more internally, we always try to offer conversation with our departments. Most of our departments will have a central contact or trades, dedicated trade person. And we explain a little bit of the process on different TBT channels and what are sort of the outcomes that we want to reach via the TBT mechanism. And when it comes to responding to the comments, we try to check it every day. And we do try to keep the pace of the responses as fluid as possible. We do have a live contact list with different contacts, and we feel this creates a bit of network of people that are following a particular issue, so it helps us to address issues speedily. So just thank you for this really useful experience sharing, and we look forward to continuing to learn from each other. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks to all the delegations who contributed to the discussion. Are there any hands on Zoom at the moment? Okay, I think then we can wrap up session two. Just to note that, I think in terms of the commentating guide, it will probably be the subject of the next Transparency Working Group as well, just to touch base, hopefully in September. And then the committee will, I'm sure, continue to discuss this also under the Transparency Agenda item and oversee finalization of this work. And just to remind you already now, in case I forget at the end of the day, is that we will have our in-person Eping training sessions the next two days. So please check out the times of the session program and contact us at the Secretariat, Una, Jamie, for example, if you would like to join in person or just send us an email, because we would like to send you some links for class sites and so on, just to make it more interactive. So I think that concludes session two. Thanks again for the engagement and apologies to our next round of speakers who are starting a bit late. But just to recall, so this session three is a workshop on the harmonized system. And why are we holding this workshop? It's actually a mandate from the committee from its ninth trial review, asking the Secretariat to organize trainings on HS and ICS codes. So hence, we have our expert colleagues from the Secretariat joining us for this session. And just to recall that the issue of improving product coverage, information and applications has come up repeatedly in the committee and also in the TBT committees' discussions and in the trial review. And just to recall, in the last trial review, there were three specific recommendations related to product coverage. And one was to the thematic session on challenges that members face in providing specific information on the product coverage of notified measures with some special emphasis on HS codes. And we, the committee did hold the thematic session last July, and you can access the discussion from then on the WTO webpage under thematic sessions. And also there was a secretariat note, job TBT 449, presentation which laid out what are the obligations and what are the current ways of inputting HS or ICS codes. That's just for background. And also under the technical assistance section of the trial review, there were two recommendations. One was to have a training session on HS and ICS codes. And the other is actually to develop, this time a good practice guide on how to improve product coverage in notifications. So we hope that today's session and feedback will also help us eventually work towards that guide. So that's just a bit of the background. So now, today we have, we will have with us two colleagues. We will first start with Roy Santana from the Market Access Division. He's a counselor there. He's a very knowledgeable, active and liquid colleague, and I underline creative, because Roy, actually, he may not see that he can only use one hand at the moment. He recently had an operation. But despite that, he was brought basically to this room and he
I was forced to comment.
So he seems quite efficient, but there may be problems, you know, he manages one hand. But thank you for joining and in person, which is always nice to have. And Roy will give us the core part of the training. And then we will be joined by another colleague, Audrey Giroux. She's an information manager who specializes in central register notifications. You may not know her, but she's also very much involved in the TBT notifications workflow. And she'll share with us some of the recent initiatives we've undertaken within the Secretariat across divisions to help with identification of HS codes by delegations and also to facilitate searches for sort of the non-experts if they're looking for notifications in their area of interest in terms of products. So and then we'll conclude with some ideas for what's next in this endeavor to improve our TBT notifications and their product coverage. So with that, I'll hand over to Roy and see how he manages with one hand. Thank you.
Hello, good afternoon, everybody. Give me one second. So my name is Roy Santana. I work for the Market Access Division. I have been working there for quite a few time. I have been working on tariff issues for more than 20 years. And one of the first things I would like to begin discussing with you is what exactly happens once you are trying to import a product into a country, right? When it comes to trade policy, many times we have this hypothetical person, you know, the private sector, we call it, the importer, somebody is trying to look for information to be able to import a product into the country. So how do they actually do that? Well, in principle, there are three main areas, three main things that need to be determined by customs to be able to determine how to treat this product. First and foremost, by far the most important starting point in every customs administration is the classification of the product. Once you know the classification of the product, then you know what duty level you can apply, what are the other requirements, licenses, et cetera, that need to be complied. We determine the value, for example, if it's 10%, 10% of what value? And then we're able to do the calculations, determine how this is going to be treated. If you have preferential type of agreements, then you also need to deal with the rules of origin. Some of these issues are handled and defined by the World Customs Organization in Brussels. Other issues are determined here at the WTO in Geneva. And there are others that are actually determined by both organizations. So we have some of the WTO agreements, like the Agreement on Customs Resolution, Agreement on Rules of Origin, where actually both the WTO and the WTO have a role to play. So we're going to be talking about, in this little pyramid I have, we're going to be talking only about the classification aspect, which I know is important for your work. And we're going to see is not necessarily the easiest of things. It might actually be quite challenging if you're looking for the classification of one concrete product. We also have the Agreement on Trade Facilitation, but we're not going to be dealing with that. So the whole procedures, how you deal with this is something else, no? So let's look at tariff classification. Let me begin with two warnings. The first one is, I am not a customs officer. So everything I'm going to be telling you is things I have learned from the trade policy point of view. Then the second thing I'm going to be telling you is that we do not really normally do trainings on the harmonized system. But what I'm going to be doing is things I do, I am also a professor at a university. So I, this is the kind of things I teach at that university. So this is based on that. So with these caveats, we begin. So once you're trying to import one concrete product, and let me just look at this, you have this gavel, right? So imagine I'm trying to import this gavel into Switzerland. The first job of somebody in the Swiss Customs Administration is to follow a legal process for the purposes of determining what is the classification of the product. So first thing, if you write a little asterisk in your notes, it's a legal process, it's not academic. It has legal consequences. Once customs administration has decided that it goes into one or another category, then you have consequences that follow on issues like what is the applicable tariff? Are there licenses or other requirements that have to be fulfilled? The levels of internal taxes would be different, other requirements, controls, et cetera, right? So again, legal process that has legal consequences. Because it's a legal process, it is also possible that the determination by customs might actually be challenged first at the administrative level with customs. And then if that fails, typically, it might actually also be challenged in front of a judge. So you have in some countries specialized courts where you can actually go and challenge the classification of a product. And in some places like Brussels, for example, you have armies of lawyers who work specifically on the classification of the products, and they are sometimes so specialized that they might even be specialized in the classification of specific types of products, right? So it's really highly specialized area even within customs. Now, classification is based on treaty, an international convention that was negotiated in the context of the World Customs Organization. This entered into force in 1998, et cetera. I'm not going to go into the details. What I want you to see is the people sitting on the left. So that's a meeting of the Harmonized System Committee, which is the one that administers this convention. And it's very interesting, because you have, just like you have representatives of the different regulators that come and meet here in Geneva, you have representatives of the customs administrations that go and meet in the WTO two, three times per year to discuss concrete issues. And you typically have them discussing very, very concrete type of questions. Like, for example, I don't know if you see the delegation of India is holding something in the hands, right? It was a, this picture is from like 10 years ago, so they're holding a new product that is coming to the market. And the question is, what is it? How do we classify it in the harmonized system? So let's see, let's see how it's done. I also wanted to show you a picture of the World Customs Organization in Brussels. It is a much smaller organization than the one we have here in Geneva. Now, and this is one area that I have noticed a lot of people tend to get confused. The HS is a system where you have something like 5,400 categories. And the question, what you're trying to determine is, in which of those 5,400 categories does it fall? It must fall in one and only one category. What happens if you have a completely new product? The product never existed before in the market. It doesn't matter. It has to fit into one of those 5,400 categories. So I don't know if you have seen that little game, maybe some of you have played when you were kids. So you basically, you drop a coin, and then the question is just to see where it actually falls. Well, the HS is a bit like that, it has to fall somewhere. The situation where it doesn't fall anywhere, it doesn't exist, there is always one solution for the classification. So let me show you. You know, last year, here in Europe, there was the whole question about, you know, what happens if there's no electricity? How do you survive? How do you survive? Lots of different things. I actually went online and bought that thing you see on the right. It's actually a real product. I actually bought it, but I forgot to bring it. And then the question is, what is it? It has a flashlight. It has a radio. It has a little solar panel, so you can actually, you know, charge it with the sun. In case you have to deal with it in the night, it also has a little crank. So you can just turn it, turn it, turn it, and then you can generate electricity to do it. It also has a battery, so you can also charge the phone. And here you start seeing the challenge for customs, right? So what is this? Because if you look at the categories we have in the H S, there is one category for flashlights, another one for the solar panels, another one for the electric generators, another one for the radio, and another one for the battery and these accessories for phones. So what is it? As I was telling you before, the situation where we say, oh, it's a new product. It cannot be classified for customs, doesn't exist. They have to be able to find one place where this product is classified. Right? I cannot stress enough that that point. Now, the H S is important and is very clever for two reasons. Once, because it's harmonized, and another one is because it's a system. And I know it sounds like a joke, but it's important in terms of being harmonized because that means if you know the solution in one country, almost certainly is going to be the solution in all other countries around the world as well. So it's harmonized around the world, which creates a lot of trade facilitating conditions. It's also a system. So you're going to see it's actually more complicated than we tend to think when we see it from the when we see it from the trade policy area. Now, if you think of all the products that exist in the world, it's many more than five thousand four hundred, right? So the question and the challenge, one of the reasons why they meet in the Harmonized System Committee in Brussels, is to define which are the categories which are relevant for trade and which are the ones to which we want to give visibility, right? So we have to have a system where we cannot have an infinite number of categories. It's only, I was telling you before, like five thousand four hundred. So the question is, which ones do we want to actually make visible? There are many other products, like the one I have on screen, that is, we know for a fact is not gonna fit in any of those categories. But then we also need to have a system that helps us to find the appropriate box, the appropriate category, where we're going to be able to to classify it. The H S is very specialized. Everything has a meaning. We're going to see even the punctuation marks have a meaning. The terminology that is used also has very concrete meanings. So every time you see something, even if it looks, let's say relatively simple, yeah, let's say not complicated, it might be more complicated than you think. So I wanna just try to give you some of the, it's a easy ways to navigate the around the edges. Of course, H S, from everything I've been telling you, is very complicated. We have, again, people who are specialized on concrete products. But I just want to give you kind of like the broad overview, the broad picture of how it works in in practice. Now, I I was telling you that it's a system. It's a system because it has different components. One of them is the text of the convention. Then we also have something we call the nomenclature, which is this combination of codes and and the different categories that I have referred to before. But then in addition, and this part is often forgotten, especially by the trade people. And I imagine for you, the regulators, you may not be familiar with this part. You also have a series of legal notes in the section, chapter headings. We're going to see what that means in a few moments, that provide definitions, inclusion, exclusions, and methods through which you find the classification of the products. I sometimes have discussions with my colleagues from T V T, and they say, oh, but those are actually some form of standard. Well, maybe. I don't know if that's the case or not, but they actually define what you consider to be or what is supposed to fall under some categories or under the others. We also have these six general interpretation rules, which are extremely important because they are the ones that help us to navigate and make the decisions in terms of how we're going to be classifying the products. We also have classification opinions, which is when the members of the Harmonized System Committee, they get together in Brussels, they look at concrete products, and then they try to decide, they even vote as to what should be the appropriate classification of a product. And then finally, you have the one which I think is the most useful, but it's not legally binding, which is called the explanatory notes. And I don't know if you noticed, but there are two things which are called notes. One of them, to make the distinction, we call it the legal notes. That's the one in number three. And then the explanatory notes are not legally binding, but from the exercise we're gonna be doing, you're going to see it's actually extremely useful. If you're gonna be working, try to understand how it works, that's the one you really wanna have in in practice to to guide you and navigate through the different options. Now, let's look at this nomenclature, right? This is the first component we have. So the H S is a bit like a, imagine all the products, you have a big pizza, and then you start slicing it into different categories. The first type of categories we have are what we call sections. You're going to see it's actually very, very broad type of categories of products, which are then divided into chapters. The chapters are numbered from one to ninety-seven. But in reality, we only have ninety-six chapters. There's one which is chapter seventy-seven, which is reserved for future use. So if you see something classified in chapter seventy-seven, for sure, something is wrong. So something is not working properly because that that doesn't really exist in in practice. Then the chapters are divided into headings, and the headings are divided into subheadings. This is done through a, I think, a very clever system of numbers. So the idea is you always read the numbers from left to right. And then if you have a six-digit code, like the one you have on screen, one, two, three, four, five, six, it gives you immediately the information on the chapter, which is the first two digits. It gives you the information on the heading, which is the first first four digits. And then, of course, if you look at the full six digits, this is what we call a subheading, right? So it's a very precise type of terminology. Sometimes people are not precise, and they call subheading any any number irrespective of the of the number of of digits. But then for purposes of customs, if you wanna be precise, it's chapter heading and subheading. And as I was telling you before, we have between five thousand three hundred, five thousand four hundred, depends on the different versions of the H S. And if we have time at the end, I'm gonna be telling you a little bit also in terms of how the H S changes. I also brought one copy of the book, so perhaps if we can pass it around. So yeah, you can actually see it. At least once you touch the H S, no? So I I brought a copy so you can see it. But you have to give it back, okay? Okay, so we're we're gonna, we're gonna give it around so you can actually look at it and feel it, no? Now, let me just show you some examples of these sections. So you have this section, Roman number one, which is live animal and animal products. You have section two, vegetable products, right? So this is very, very big, like macro categories of products, like section six, products of the chemical or allied industry, right? So it's really, really big categories of of products. Then the chapters are a subdivision of those categories. And then, for example, in terms, remember, we had the first category, which was live animals and animal products, right? So this is divided into five chapters. The first chapter is the live animals, except fish. Meat and edible meat waffle. Chapter three, fish and crustaceans, mollusks and other aquatic invertebrates. Even the live fish would be classified there in chapter three. Chapter four is dairy, et cetera, right? So you see, you see the the trend, right? So you have these macro categories of vegetable products, for example, which are then divided into specific type of 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 products or or subcategories. Chapter nine is one of my favorites because there you have coffee, tea, mate, and and spices. Now, let's look how this looks in in practice. Or imagine you are classifying the importation of one concrete motor, electric motor, like the one we have on screen. So if you if you look in terms of the information we have, this would be classified in chapter eighty-five, which is for electrical machinery and equipment and parts thereof. This one is then subdivided into all sorts of different of electrical machinery. One, in fact, the first heading or first subcategory we have is this electric motors and generators, which is then subdivided again into the different types of motors. And then you have the first category, which is called motors of an output not exceeding thirty point seven five watts. And then you have this at the national level that could be then subdivided into different types of 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 motor. One one thing, and I think in the exercise, this is gonna become much clearer. Once you are reading H S codes, it's always a mistake if you just go directly and read only one line. For example, imagine you have that tariff code, which is eighty-five oh one ten ninety, and you see others. If the only thing you see that is that, you have absolutely no idea what they're talking about, right? For customs, it's implicit that you know how the system works. So it's implicit that you know you are talking about electrical machinery, that you are talking about electric motors and generators. And then you are talking about motors of an output not exceeding thirty point five. And then on top, you know that is not synchronous, et cetera. So in in the context of the H S, it's extremely important always to read everything in their context. Normally, we're going to see, in fact, the rule is you are supposed to begin by looking at the four-digit code. You are supposed to begin by looking at the appropriate heading. Once you find the appropriate heading, then you start digging down and looking at the different subcategories that you have below. So for example, if you have that category of motors of an output not exceeding thirty point five watts, and then you subdivide that at the national level, ten and ninety, in synchronous motors of an output not exceeding eighteen, why would be classified under eighteen oh eighteen eighty-five oh one ten ninety? Who would like to try to explain what is classified in there? So with the information I gave you, if if it's under eighteen oh five ten, it must be motors of an output not exceeding thirty point five watts, right? Now, there are different types of technologies for the motors. Some of them are synchronous or other ones are asynchronous. So if it's asynchronous necessarily, it will need to be under ninety. If it's synchronous, some of them might be under ten, depending on the output. And others might be on the ninety if they actually exceed that output. I don't know if you see the logic. I know this one, it is a hard example to see, but I promise, once we do the exercise, it's gonna become easier. Another thing I want you to see right now is those little dashes. Everything in the H S has a meaning. The dash in, I don't know if you see, so one of them has one dash and the other one has two dashes, right? So the dash is these little lines you have. You have here and here. Those dashes are meant to assist you in navigating in terms of the hierarchical structure. The headings will never have a dash because they are, if we wanna call it like the mother of, let's say, of the category. And then the mothers have daughters. If we wanna see it in that way, so the daughters is the first tier, the first category of, sorry, the first level of categories which is being created. And they are normally identified with one dash. And then if you have subdivisions, then the mother has daughters that has granddaughters. And then to know that they are granddaughters, they are identified with this little two dashes, right? So the logic is is relatively clear if you know how it works. If I can tell you a little story, when I began working, I was negotiating an F T A. And at some point, I was dealing with this, I have no idea, you know, trade person, I have no idea how these dashes thing work. And at some point, they bother me, so I just did a replace all. And then I sent it to customs, this is what you need to implement, and they almost killed me, no? It's like, how are we supposed to implement this if you deleted all the dashes? The most important thing in in all the information and all those different categories that you sent me, right? So never underestimate the little details, including the the dashes. Again, we're gonna see this in more detail in the in the practice. Do we have any question thus far? No, okay. Now, up to the six-digit level is standard all around the world. The moment you go beyond that, it's defined in two different ways. You have some countries that define it by themselves. But it's also relatively normal that you have groups of countries that get together. And then they define nomenclature at the eight-digit level, and then they try to harmonize also at that level. If I can give you one concrete example, in Europe, you have what they call the combined nomenclature. Where basically all EU countries got together, and then they defined at the eight-digit level what are the different subcategories they want to have beyond the six-digit levels of the harmonized system. So those subcategories, which are defined beyond the six-digit level, it is possible to do it as long as those subcategories are still compatible with the overall logic of the H S. Another example I wanted to give you is you also have the ASEAN harmonized tariff nomenclature. It's called the H T N. If you are from Mercosur, they have the Mercosur nomenclature. Andean community has the Andean community nomenclature. I think ECOWAS also has its own nomenclature, et cetera, right? So this this actually is is quite good for us because it makes it, let's say, it reduces the number of variability you have in the different nomenclatures around the the world, right? So it's not a hundred and sixty-four, is less than that, no? In terms of WTO members. Now, I told you we have about five thousand four hundred categories. So the question is, how do we determine those categories, right? So I told you that there is one part which is political that has to do with visibility of the products. So the political decision of creating a visible category or not is something that is discussed in the harmonized system. But then there are also some basic rules, which is interesting. I, this is my own definition. If you talk to customs, they will not describe it like this, but I think this is what they mean. And the idea is that you can create categories as long as they are based on the objective characteristics of the products, right? Things like the weight, the material in which they are used, et cetera, right? You are not supposed to use, and in fact, it's extremely really, really rare that the categories are built on this basis, things like the process and production methods. Like, for example, you have a tomato, is it bio or not? That that's typically not something you're able to do in in the H S categories. The end use, you have this car, but it's going to be used as a taxi. Well, end use, very difficult to control at the border because you don't know what the importer is going to be doing after they import a product. And then other conditions, like whether the product is new, used, other conditions. Again, unless you can really determine based on the physical characteristics of the products, very difficult to create categories on that basis. Now, there are, of course, examples of situations where this is not the case, or you have exceptions. And let me give you one example, which has to do with carpets. So carpets, there is a distinction that we make at some point between the hand-woven carpets and the machine-made rocks. And I don't know if you have ever done it, if you have ever gone to one of these places where you buy these super expensive carpets. One of the first things they actually do is they turn them around. And if they are handmade, it's relatively easy to see that they are handmade because the machine-made have this very big, I don't know, sorry, you know. How do, can you move the or minimize the the picture? Well, let me show you. There's two characteristics. Okay, thank you. So the machine-made have this very big fringe. And then the border, typically, they actually have two saws here on the right. I I guess you cannot see very well, depending on when you're sitting. Once you have the presentation, it's gonna be easier to see. The ones which are man-made is actually little knots, which are made by hand. And depending on the region, they have different types of knots. And some of them, the real experts can actually tell you which knot it is just by looking at the back of of the carpet, right? But again, this is an exception. It doesn't mean that you can create subcategories based on on the manufacturing process or the P P M of the products. You can only do it if you can actually have, like in this case, very concrete objective characteristics that you can actually demonstrate and see in in practice. This is very important because remember, it's a legal process. So if it's a legal process, it cannot be arbitrary. If you have a dispute and you in fact wanna take it to a judge, laboratories are going to be involved, experts are going to be involved. And then you need to have categories that can be determined, not only in the most developed countries. It has to be, you have to be able to apply in one hundred and sixty-four. It has to be, you have to be able to apply it in one hundred and sixty-four. Of us, in fact, the HS is more, it's like a hundred and seventy-nine countries around the world, right? So the categories, there are also sometimes limits, even if super high-tech technology would allow you to identify the products. Perhaps you can do it at the national level, but you cannot demand that the poorest countries are at the same level of technology to be able to do that type of of distinction, right? So there are also this this type of of limits in the creation of the categories. Now, any question thus far? I don't think, oh, Zambia, yes. Please go ahead.
Uh, thank you very much for the good presentation on HS uh codes. Uh, the question I have, I'm from Zambia. Uh, the issue of misclassification of products by importers, most mostly traders in our country. I'll give an example on one particular product which is edible oils. Uh, using the HS code, you find that the importer, you find the product and they put the HS code as if it is a crude product. Uh, so how would you address such?
Yeah, and let me guess, one of them pays a much higher duty than the others.
Yes, of course.
Yes, let me collect the other uh question from South Africa and then we move to to this.
Thank you um for this. I hope I know you. Thank you for this informative uh presentation. I don't know whether you're going to get to this. Um, can you explain to us the EX that you sometimes find next to the um HS code?
Yes, in terms of the misclassification, as I was telling you before, the way the system works is you have a declaration which is made by the importer. You typically have some form of controls, checks, risk uh analysis uh or risk management, which is done by the customs administration. If they, if you are somebody that behaves and you have a good history, you are perhaps an authorized operator, they tend to believe you, so very little checks are done. Uh, if not, and you have a very bad record, and perhaps you even have been found to be lying to customs before. Perhaps there are these systems where red flags are raised, and then they check your product. They can even have physical inspection, they can send it to laboratories. And if if it's not what you are declaring, customs has the authority to classify it somewhere else. If there is a disagreement, often there is. It is not necessarily only for fraud. Sometimes you have really have very legitimate reasons as to why importers and customs may disagree as to where a product will be classified. You have administrative procedure in front of customs. If that fails, you can still go to a judge. And then the judge is the one who determines who is right or or not, right? So there is this, it's a it's a legal process like any other. Uh, the difference, I guess, sometimes is that it's it's quite, it's quite frequent, right? You have many, many importations that are taking place. Uh, in terms of the question by Temby, sorry, by, nice to see you, Temby. Sometimes it happens that you will see, for example, here, a little EX uh before that we typically use in, that is not really used by customs, is more used by the people working in the trade policy area to note a situation where you're not not talking about the entirety of the code. You're only talking about part of the code. So we have this concept of X outs to identify when you're talking. If you have, for example, eighty-five oh eighty-five oh one ten, that means is the entire, all products that fall in that subheading. And if you have something that says EX, means it's only part of the products which are classified in that subheading. So to make things even more complicated, you have what is being used in customs. And then you also have in the trade policy area, we have this kind of adaptations that have been used, especially for negotiations uh over time. Uh, Brazil, I think it's Elio.
Thank you, thank you, Roy. Uh, my delegation has a question about the this is new technologies or multi-functionality of new products and how how does the, I don't know, the World Customs Organization or the AGS broadly deals with that? And you have multi multifunctionality with a new product, and then you don't know if it is chapter eighty-five or other chapter. Like today, we have a mobile, even the smartphone, for instance, is uh, is uh, it's not very evident, I mean, to how to, how do you define in terms of the functions, right? Uh, but uh, thinking about like artificial intelligence and new technologies, how would that fit into the the AGS? Thank you.
Thank you. That that's a very good question, but if you you don't mind, we postpone it after we actually see how it works in practice on the example. Because I think you're going to see, they actually have foreseen many of these problems, right? Because again, remember, we have five thousand four hundred little boxes where you have to fit hundreds of thousands of different types of products, right? So by definition, by design, they know it is not going to be possible to agree on every single category, and then we have these techniques to finding out what happens in those other situations. So if if you don't mind, let's let's begin. And and we're going to see this, which I find absolutely fascinating, sorry, I'm a nerd on on these issues, which is called the general rules for the interpretation of the HS. Depending on the country, sometimes they call it GRIs, or they can call it also GIRs. Both of them are are okay, right? And then these rules are an integral part of the nomenclature is the day-to-day basis. If you are interpreting the HS, you are supposed to do it always based on these rules. And the idea is you try to lay down principles that if two, three different people in different parts of the world are faced with the same product, with the same type of information, they should in principle be able to arrive to the same conclusion for the classification uh of the product. Uh, and like everything in customs, these rules also apply in hierarchical order. So the idea we're going to see, you begin with rule one. Only if if you cannot satisfy the classification with rule one, then you move to rule two and so on and and so forth. The first five rules are for the headings. And then we have one rule at the end residual for the subheadings, but let's let's see how it works. Uh, I'm not gonna try to explain all of them now in detail. I'm gonna try to give you examples, which I think is more interesting. Uh, and in fact, I'm, we're gonna try to do, all do it together with a little program program called Mentee. I don't know if you have used it before. But I think it's gonna be quite interesting. Let's look, so this is the full description. In the links I gave you, there is one publication by the World Customs Organization. And then there you have in detail the the different descriptions. I also gave you a separate document, which is actually the JR GIRs uh themselves. In fact, it's one page. Uh, and if you are a lawyer, I think you're really gonna like what we're gonna be doing next. And if not, I'm sorry, let's let's see how it works. There is a a joke uh in customs that there is also, you have six GRRs. But then you also have rule zero, and the rule zero is really is the common sense, right? So before you begin, you really need to have a lot of information. Like, you are looking at the product, remember the little thing I bought? What is it? Right? Is it a, well, first you need to see the function. Well, it's a radio, it's a flashlight, it's a solar panel, it's a charger for a phone, et cetera. What is the material or substance is made of? What is the function or use? Maybe it has more than one function. Under what form is being imported? Uh, this is very important because for customs, in principle, they have to deal with the classification of the product. And the technical term is as presented to customs. Right? So is how it is being presented to you, even the same product, they presented differently, that can also make a a difference in terms of how you classify it. And then very importantly, is this the only possible classification? Or maybe it could also be classified somewhere else, right? It often happens that there might be more than one classification for that particular product. At the beginning, that's okay, but then remember, one and only one box that we need to find where to put it, right? Okay, let's look at rule number one. Rule number one, this is where you always begin. And then it tells you that the titles of the section, chapters, subchapters is provided for ease of reference only. And then for legal purposes, classification shall be determined based on what? Based of the terms of the headings and the relevant section of chapter notes. Remember, I told you there were two types, right? The legal and the explanatory. Here, we're talking about the legal notes. It says, provided such headings or notes do not otherwise require according to the following provision, right? So it tells you that if you fail with that, then you need to go to number two. So if you don't mind, let's let's do the following. Uh, we're gonna be trying to classify this pink shirt. And the question is, in the HS, it turns out, is a bit anachronic, is the result of the quotas for textiles that used to be applied before. You have these categories for women and girls and for men and boys. And then how do we know? Right? How do we know? Okay, let's, just give me one second. And now let's go, take out your phones. You all have phones, right? Don't lie to me, I know you have phones. Where is Suma here? Okay, let's see how it works. So you go to mentee.com and you type that code, or you can just flash the QR code if you Can you, can you move it to the side? Ah, perfect. Okay, once you are in, you see you have the heart, the thumbs up or the cats, just choose any and click so we know you're in. If you're using your laptop, then you need to go to mentee.com. And then you put the code eighty-eight zero eight forty-nine eighty-two. Okay, not many cat lovers. Okay, I give you thirty more seconds and then we move on. Okay, yes, now you discovered, if you keep clicking, it's gonna show you more, no? So give me hearts. Ah, there you go, you see? Okay, I think you're all connected, right? If not, you can still join uh later on, so let's move. Now, we're looking at this shirt. Uh, it's a pink shirt made of cotton, not knitted or crushed. It's a long sleeve. And that's all the information you have. So you are looking at this shirt. And then the question for you is, how do you classify this product? Is it for men's or boys? Is it for women or girls? It's impossible to differentiate. While you answer it, I can tell you at some point, I have a daughter, and when my daughter was like one year old, I bought, it was a Hello Kitty, it was a black T-shirt. And I just put the T-shirt and I brought my my girl to my mother-in-law, and then she was completely offended. What are you doing? Girls are not supposed to dress in black. And I told her, look, but in what country? Because depending on the country, in some countries, actually, black is the color for women, no? Anyway, so you have this cultural aspect, but then a cultural aspect like that, you will not be able really to take into account in the context of a category. Remember, it has to be based on objective characteristic of the product. So something like color, you you cannot really use color to distinguish if it's for one or for the other, right? But here, a lot of people said twenty-eight said it's for men's or boys, but how do you know? Sorry? The cut. But then you can have the exactly same cut for men and for women, no? In fact, many women sometimes all of a sudden are wearing clothes from men, right? But then if you have to do these categories based on the objective characteristics, how would you do it? Well, let me show you. And some of you said it's impossible to differentiate. Well, it is possible. And let me tell you, you're probably gonna be very surprised by the rule. You remember, I told you, we have these legal notes, right? Well, there is one legal note for chapter sixty-two that says that garments of this chapter designed for left-over-right closure at the front shall be regarded as for men's or for girls, and they are designed for right-over-left closure as women's or girls. You have never ever noticed because it's always on the same side, right? Right? So depending, and and I know you don't believe me, but then if you have a partner, then you're gonna go, when you go back home, try to check and it's gonna be on the other side, right? So the general rule is left-over-right at the front closure is for men or boys. Right-over-left closure at the front is for women or girls. However, watch out, these provisions do not apply where the cut of the garment clearly indicates that is the site for one or the other sexes. Again, the all, this whole thing is a legacy from the seventies, right? What we are having here. Uh, today, we have many clothes which are unisex. I mean, companies don't care as long as they can sell them, right? Then we also have this rule, garments which cannot be identified as either men's or boys or for women's or girls' garments are to be classified in the headings covering women's or girls' garments. Why? Well, men are very conservative, right? We have like three colors of shirts and two colors for shoes, and that's it. So if it's something different, it's for women. That's that's the rule that they have in the that's the rule they have in the HS. Okay, let's continue. So that's, so this is just one example, right? So you have literally hundreds, hundreds of rules like this one that tells you whether you put it in one place or the other. Uh, if I if I answer, uh, Elio, Elio was asking about uh what happens about the multifunctionality, there is one specific rule in terms of how you deal with that multifunctionality uh aspect. And then you are supposed to look at which is the principal function. Now, how you deal with the principal function, that's a different question, no? Okay, you try with rule one, you failed, then you need to move to rule number two. And rule number two deals with incomplete, unfinished, unassembled or disassembled type of goods. Uh, or situations where you have combinations, right? So let's see how this works in in practice. And then this rule is subdivided. So we have GRI two A. And then this one says, any reference in a heading to an article shall be taken to include a reference to that article, incomplete or unfinished, provided that as presented, it has the essential character of the complete or finished article. Complete or finished or classified or classified as complete or finished by virtue of this rule presented unassembled or disassembled. I know it sounds very complicated, but let's look at some some examples. Okay, let me go back. Yeah, this is where the other hand would have been very helpful. No, no, don't worry. I I can do it, don't worry. Okay. Okay, let's continue with Mentee. So we have this. What is it? I know some of you are bikers. This is a very famous brand from Switzerland, BMC. Uh, so it's almost a bicycle, but it doesn't have a seat and it doesn't have the pedals. So you cannot ride it. So how would you classify this product if you look at the rule we just looked at? And we have here two options. We could say this is almost the same as a bicycle, or we can say, no, this is just parts of a bicycle. Okay, so most of you say parts eleven, okay, of the eleven that said it's a bicycle. Why? Who wants to provide the answer as to why? Okay, let me show you again. Uh, please, Australia, go ahead.
You, um, just to encourage people to try to answer the questions is because um it's because it has the essential character of a bicycle, so what's missing is not so substantive that it's not that it's not recognizably a bicycle at that point. And so based on that point, that's why I chose to say it would be classified as a bicycle.
It's not a bicycle, but it's almost a bicycle, right? Okay. Important point here to make, remember I told you at the beginning, it's a legal exercise. Again, you have armies of lawyers involved. Uh, but then this is one typical example where basically two small pieces missing. Takes like five minutes to put them on, so, you know, this has the essential character of a bicycle. In a situation like the one we saw before, we agree it's not a fully assembled bicycle, right? But we need to find one box, and it's either parts or the fully assembled bicycle. or the fully assembled bicycle. And in this case, because of GRI two A, we would classify still as a bicycle. Okay? Is it clear? You don't look very convinced. But let's see. Uh, another thing, once you see, uh, you know, in many countries, they have these databases for what have been the classifications that have been determined for products in the past or in the context of advanced rulings. And you are going to see that this typically, these rulings typically will say as per application of GRI to A is this one. In fact, it can be just one liner telling you how to classify, and they assume you know what these rules, uh, are. Again, this is gonna come up very frequently, the essential character of the product, right? Okay? Okay, what about this? This is something that we call preforms. And imagine you are producing, uh, a beverage and then you need to import these little pieces of plastic. They are almost like a bottle. But then you see, in fact, let me put it in mentee, it's probably easier. And I explain it here. Ah, some of you changed it, huh? Some of you waited to hear the answer. So it's, it's like this, it's almost a bottle. Uh, but then bottles have a problem because they have a lot of air in the middle, right? So you typically would buy these in other countries, then you import, you put it in your machine. The machine would then heat it up, typically made of a PET. Uh, then you have a machine that blows air on the inside and then poof, it takes the form of a bottle, right? But it has already the crown, you could even put a little, uh, you could screw the, the top already, right? So again, if we are applying GRI to A, the question is, does this have the essential character of a bottle? Or you just classify it as some, something else? Okay, if you are saying that it's another article made of plastic, you are saying this doesn't have the essential character of a bottle, but why not? Australia, you want to answer?
What have I done? Um, thank you. Um, because a substantial transformative act would have to be undertaken before you could actually use it in the way you would use a bottle. I thought this one wasn't, didn't, wasn't yet at a point of having the, of being essentially a water bottle. Even if all that needs to be added to it is water, it's not water, air, but, um, because it would require big.
But wait, wait, we're not sa, we're not saying that it's a, a, uh, bu, uh, water bottle. We're asking whether it's a bottle. An empty bottle.
I take it back.
Right? Yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry. Just, just to be clear, we're not saying that this is a, a water bottle, right? We're saying this is an empty, where the question is whether it's an empty bottle made of plastic, made of PET, or whether it's just something else made of plastic. And this is one example that we typically use to say that this has the essential character. Because through a relatively simple operation, which is the heating up and blowing up, just to give the form, you can transform it into a bottle. You will not use this for anything else, no? You have to use it to produce plastic bottles. Therefore, it is classified as a plastic bottle. That's the, the logic. Okay? You see, the life of customs people is not that easy, yeah? Ah, somebody came at the, at the last minute. Okay, let's continue. Sorry, I'm trying to convince you that classification is fun. Okay, what's the difference between this one and this one? This one is incomplete, it's missing parts, right? Even if it's missing parts, if it has the essential character, it can still be classified as the finished product. Here is different, is, is the same thing, right? It's just, it's missing a couple of steps in the production process, right? It's still unfinished. The next one is this one. So let's go. Let's go here. This is there, I'm getting better. Okay, so this one is all the parts of a bicycle is semi-assembled and it all comes together in a box. So what is this one? Well, we have one trend, which is nobody's asked, nobody's saying impossible to differentiate anymore, right? Imagine if we were trying to create categories for everything. It would be impossible, right? So the ones that bicycles that have the handle but not the seat, but not the pedals, I mean, you will need to have hundreds of categories just to have all the different combinations. A relatively simple rule helps you to define when is one or when is the other, right? And here you're saying as a bicycle. Uh, yes, in fact, if you go to many stores, especially in Europe, they give you the box and then it's up to you to put together the bicycle. Very, very simple operations typically takes you, I don't know, five, 10 minutes with relatively simple tools to be able to, to do it, right? So this is one example that typically would be considered also to be a finished product, you would classify it as a bicycle. Okay, what about this one? This is, you go to Ikea or IKEA, and then you buy the car, it gives you all the parts of a car, you just need to put it together. Good discount. Can we apply rule GRI two A to this? Is it a car or in this case, we will need to, if we say no, we will need to classify every part separately. Okay. Let me put it in these terms, this is probably easier to understand. If you go to the store, you buy a bicycle and they give you this, you're okay, right? You can put it together. If you go to, uh, the car dealer and you buy a car and they give you this, you're gonna be very upset. Right? There's no way a normal consumer is gonna be able to have all the tools necessary to put this together. So this clearly doesn't have the essential character of a car. Right? We all agree? Good. Okay, let's go back to this. Okay, GRI two B deals with situation where you have mixtures and combinations of materials or substances. Uh, but then in reality, this one always takes, takes you to rule three, so let's go to rule three directly. And one, one very important thing, I, I think I forgot to say in some of the others. Many times you already have for specific situations, legal notes that tell you how to solve it. So you only get here after you have checked the notes and the notes do not help you to solve the, the specific situation. Okay, like the one we saw on the shirt for, for men or boys, girls, women or girls. Okay. So GRI three deals with situations where you have two or more possible classifications for a particular product. And again, you have three different rules you are supposed to follow in hierarch, hierarchical order. First, you are supposed to look at, as to whether there is one more specific than the other. If not, then you are supposed to look at the essential character. And if not, we have a tiebreaker, but we leave the tiebreaker for the end. So let's look at the first one. It tells you, you are supposed to look at the more specific. So if you have two possibilities, let's look at the little, uh, the little machine I had before. So one of them was the flashlight, the radio, the charger, the, the generator and the power, sorry, the solar panel, et cetera. Is one of them more specific than the other? Not really, right? So this is dealing with very specific type of situations, but in most situations, you have this situation where there are not really one which is more specific uh, than the other. And then in the documents, in the presentation I'm gonna be giving you, I have an extract of a document from the WCO that tells you how you are supposed to be looking at this in terms of classes, et cetera. Uh, if I am very honest, I think people are trained on this for many years to understand how it works. For me, not very evident at all how it works in, in practice. GRI three B is simpler. And then here, the idea is you are supposed to be looking at situations where you have mixtures, composite goods or sets. And here the idea is you are supposed to try to find which of those different products is the one that gives the essential character. If I can give you one, uh, example, every time you're eating some, uh, potato chips or crisps, they come packed in what? In a little bag, right? And it's, what's the material of that little bag? Well, it turns out it's a composite type of material. On the one side is plastic, on the other one side is aluminum. So the producers of this product, what they do is they buy huge rolls of this composite type of goods. And then the question for customs is, oh my God, is it aluminum covered with plastic or is it plastic covered by aluminum? So you have sometimes also this kind of like mirror type of, uh, classifications. And the question is, how do you determine whether it has the essential character of one or the other? How would you do it? In customs, there are different ways in which you can do it. One of them could be based on the thickness, for example. Maybe one of them is thicker than the other. Uh, in some cases, you might even look at the value of the product, right? Imagine on the one side is plastic and on the other one is gold. Well, most likely because of value gold, right? So it, the, it's not a mathematical type of exercise, it's a legal determination. So you have lawyers making arguments, trying to convince people as to whether it's one, uh, or the other. Let me give you some examples. So imagine you have a mixture of ninety percent wheat and ten percent gluten. So that one has the essential character of what? Most likely, most people are gonna say it's wheat, no? Okay, you may also have situations, it's just like the one I told you before, so it's two different materials used in the production of one particular product. For example, a conveyor belt made of plastic and rubber. So again, is, is it made of plastic or rubber? Depending on that, you classify differently. You have a wooden coat hanger, so one part is wood, one little piece if is metal. So what is it? Right? So you have this, these different types of situations. And then you have for customs, the ultimate nightmare, which is situations like this one. Right? So you go, imagine somebody is trying to import already pre-packed a situation like this, where you have the baby soap with the baby shampoo and the baby this and the baby that is like five different things. It's imported as one single product because it's going to be sold like that. And the question is, what is it? And then you're supposed to look at the essential character and determine based on that one, one classification, right? So again, for purposes of classification, this is typically one of the most difficult type of, of situations. If after going through all these different situations, it might be that you fail, and for example, I look at the one at the left, I have no idea which one gives the essential character, Sarah? What do you think? Is it the soap? Is it shampoo? Is it?
Wood.
No, the one on the left. But anyway, you, you see the problem, right? So we need, we need a tiebreaker because it might be that even after looking at this rule, we cannot determine the essential character. And the rule is, we list all the possible classifications for the soap, the shampoo, the cream, the this, and we take the one which is last in numerical order. Why the last in numerical order? Why not? It's a tiebreaker, right? We have been spending a lot of time, we need something that is objective and gives you an answer. So the idea is you list all the possible classifications and you choose the last one. I know it sounds a bit, uh, how can I call it rudimentary? But it works, right? No, it's not random. It's objective. You choose the last one. Now, any, any question up to here? No? Okay, let's look very quickly at, uh, some of the other ones, so we can do the exercise with the chocolates, because of course, all of you brought the chocolate, right? Okay, let's look at rule number five. We're gonna skip rule number four, group, group number five. So you have situations where sometimes the goods come with, uh, specially shaped containers. Right? And then the question is, how do we treat that container? Is that container part of the product or not? Right? And then the answer here is normally they are if they meet the following criteria. So imagine you have a product like the one on the right. Uh, what is it? It's a machine gun, well, let's suppose it's a toy machine gun. And then it comes in a package like the ones you will have in a guitar. Right? So the question is, is that case specially shaped for that part of the machine gun we're trying to import? If the answer is no, then we will need to classify it and treat it and subject to, uh, duties separately, right? So question number one, is, is it specifically shaped or fit to contain a specific article or set of articles? What do you think? Is it specifically shaped to contain the machine gun? Well, yes, but then I don't know if you take out the phone, maybe you can also put in a, a guitar, right? If that's the case, immediately it would fail number one. But let's suppose it does. Let's suppose it's, the foam is glued into the case, and then the question is whether this is specifically shaped to, to contain that, the answer would be yes. Is it suitable for long-term use? Yes. Is it presented with the article for which they are intended? That, that, this means, are they coming together? The answer is? Yes. Is it of a kind normally sold with such articles? Ah, here, a good lawyer would probably tell you, no way, I mean, where have you seen this thing? Looks very funny, but no, it's not normally the way they are sold, right? So here you would probably say no, and then you would classify them separately, right? Because it fails this, this test. Let's, let's look at some other examples. Imagine you have this very expensive silver caddy and on the inside it has tea. So the question is, is it tea? Or is it a silver, silver caddy? What's the rule? Is it specially shaped or fit to contain a specific article or set of, of, cert of articles? Well, this one says tea, you know? Is it suitable for long-term use? Yes. Is it presented with the articles? Well, in this case, yes, because it's, is the caddy coming with, with the tea on the inside? Is it normally sold like this? Probably not, right? So in this, in this case, it's actually one example. And this, you see how they, uh, summarize it here. Tea is classified in zero nine, zero three, thirty. The caddy would be classified in sixty-nine, thirteen, ninety. And then basically they say no, because it does not meet the conditions of rule five A. Then the components have to be classified separately. Is it clear? Okay, let's look at the next one. The next one you have, let's say it's a laptop. And the laptop, when you buy it, it comes with the charger, it comes with some little plugs. It comes with a bubble graph. And it has the, the cardboard box, uh, et cetera. And then here, one of the rules we have is that the packing, packing materials and packing containers that come with the good are classified together with the good. This one makes sense, right? If I go to a shop and I buy a laptop, they're gonna give me a box like that one, and everything that comes in there is part of the computer, it's part of the laptop, right? So for purposes of classification, we do. So for purposes of classification, we do not take out everything and classify, classify them separately. If it's part of the normal packing materials, packing containers, we just classify it all together. Another exception has to do with situations where the containers are clearly suitable for repetitive use. If you are in the barbecue mode, you're familiar with these ones. Right? So this is the steel containers that have gas on the inside. So imagine you are importing gas with the container. So here you would classify the gas in one place and then you would classify the steel containers separately. Okay, I, I see I'm losing you. Let's go, let's go to the exercise. I think you all have it. It's on the webpage, let me open it. Yeah, the case study. It's not there? Ah, okay. Well, anyway. Anyway, I can explain to you. Let me show it on screen. Okay. So now I want you to use the, can, can we give it to them in some way? Present it or put it now, no? No, I think the document is relatively small, let's, if you put it in the chat. Anyway, let, let's try to, let me explain to you what we're dealing with, right? So let's imagine, one of my hobbies is I like to produce chocolates. And I have this commercially known product commercially known as Panacea. So the Panacea chocolate bars, Panacea means is I usually use the best ingredient from all over the world to produce the best chocolates, right? So the idea is you're trying to find me where these chocolates are going to be classified. And for that, we need to understand how the classification of chocolates work. So let's look at the ingredients of my chocolates. If you can write it down, we're trying to give you the, the case study, but just in case. So we have, of course, cocoa powder, 45% from a very rare breed of trinitario cocoa beans, which are environmentally produced and by certified bio farms in Ghana and Cote d'Ivoire. This specific type of cocoa only contains 6% of fat and is nearly half the content of ordinary cocoa powder. Then, because it's made in Switzerland, I also use 25% of pure Swiss milk of certified happy cows from the interlaken region. If you haven't been there, you have to go. Uh, and it has also relatively low fat. I then also use organic sugar from Mauritius, stevia from Paraguay, corporal cornflakes from Mexico, and premium vanilla bean from Madagascar and some other minor ingredients. If we were dealing with rules of origin, this would be very interesting exercise, but we're dealing with something else, right? Very Swiss chocolate. Is it? That's not the question, right? But let's see, what are the rules for dealing with chocolate? So I let you, I'm not going to tell you anything, I'm, I let you read it. It's already in the chat? Okay, the exercise is already in the chat, in case you want to read it. If you cannot read it, I'm going to put it on screen and I let you, give you a couple of minutes to read this part and then to move to the next part. We are in page three of the exercise, but if you have the chat, go ahead and, and download it. Okay, let me move it down. This, by the way, it's a, an extract from the explanatory notes. So this is the explanatory notes in terms of how to classify chocolate. So this one is not legally binding, but you see, has a lot of information, right? Okay, for those of you reading on screen, I'm going to then move it so you see the last bit. Are you ready? Everybody finished reading? Yes? Okay. Now, we're going to try to do something fun. We're going to do a little competition. Do you like competitions? Or not? We're still using mentee. Okay, I know you don't trust me, but those are my chocolates. We, we even have a video where these chocolates appear, WTO video where they appear. Anyway. Now, after what you read, and let's think a bit more in the abstract, right? Imagine we are creating categories for chocolates. What are kind of the objective characteristics we could take into account to classify them? The filling, the form. What else? Come on, don't be shy. Ingredients, ah, the weight, very important, yes? Okay, whether they're filled, not filled, main, main ingredient. Now, let, let's talk about it more in terms of your area. How do you know if something is a chocolate or not? In most countries, you have a minimum cocoa content that has to be met to be able to call it chocolate, right? And a few years ago, there was a movement by some of the cocoa exporters trying to actually increase that percentage because it was relatively low in many countries, right? I think it was something like 4%, 5% in some countries. And they said, look, that's too little, you need to increase the cocoa content to be able to call it chocolate. Of course, the consequence of that would have been that you need more cocoa to be able to call it, produce and keep calling it chocolate, right? Cocoa and milk contents, funny, nobody, but ingredients, ingredients could also be sugar. Sugar content could also be used to determine the, the classification of the product, right? But from what you saw, already in the HS, they took into account these different elements to create the different categories, right? So I'm going to be asking you some questions. So in the next part, you are going to be asked to put your name and you're going to be assigned a, a little avatar and you're going to be competing. So I'm going to be asking you questions. You get more points if it's correct. And the faster, the fastest question, sorry, the fastest answer gets the more points, okay? The faster you answer, the more points you get. Ready? Okay, this we already saw, sorry. Come on, don't be shy. Are you playing as well or not? Come on, don't be shy. Come on, we have like 70 people and only 32 have joined. Don't be shy, join. Nobody's going to know what your answer is, only if you win. Okay, we start when we get 40. Come on, two more. Ah, there we go, okay. Let's start. Ready? Let's see what's the first, oh no, somebody left. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm, we're going to have to start, okay? How many direct subcategories under heading 1806? You remember we said about the mother and the daughters and the granddaughters? Three, two, one, no pressure. Ah, good. How do we know? Let's, let's take a look. First of all, the, the main category we have here is chocolate and other food preparations containing cocoa. So one very important criteria for being classified here is that it has to contain cocoa, right? If it doesn't contain cocoa, it cannot be classified under 1806. What is the first category? The first category is this one, right? How do I know? Well, one of the reasons is we have the little dash, right? So this is one of the daughters. And this one is cocoa powder containing added sugar or other sweetening matter. This sounds like what? Have you ever tried Nesquik? You know, that's the kind of product we're talking about here, right? The second category is this one, which is other preparations other than what? So is cocoa powder goes here, everything else we need to try here. So it's other preparations, it has to be in blocks, slabs or bars, weighting more than 2 kilograms or in liquid paste, powder, granular or other board forms in containers or immediate packings of a content exceeding 2 kilograms, right? So this is another category. What is the third category? Which is the third category? Come on, don't be shy. Which one? So we have two of the four categories, what's the next one? What's the third one? Ah, this one. But why are you taking this one into account if it doesn't have anything? There's no code in front. But you are right. And this is where it becomes a bit, a bit difficult to explain. Because in the narrative of the harmonized system, we only have headings, sub-chapter headings, subheadings. But in reality, we also have something like this. Which, this is in the logic of the HS, you have this, right? So there is a third category that is not a heading, is not a subheading. Sometimes they call it five-digit subheadings. Which is then subdivided again, right? So these ones, let me put them in what, in green? If these ones are the daughters, this one is also a daughter. But then these are the granddaughters and they are born from this one, right? Other, other in blocks, slabs or bars, other means what? It's a chocolate or other food preparation which is not cocoa powder, which are not big blocks of more than 2 kilograms, right? So the ones we have here, it doesn't say it, but we know is all those which are less than 2 kilograms. What happens if they are exactly 2 kilograms? So this one is exactly or less than 2 kilograms, right? Now, in the world of trade policy, in the databases we use, we tend to add these little codes. It follows the same logic, right? So it's 18063, which is then divided into 31 and 32. But for customs, this is a bit of heresy and then they really don't like when we, when we do it. But then from a database point of view, typically you need to do it because you don't like to have empty, empty spaces, right? So let's put it like this. And then we strike it out because this is the logic, but then we don't really, we're not, we're, we do it, but we're not supposed to do it, no? And then what's the last category? This one, which is other. Okay, let's go back to mentee and let's see the other products and see if you can, if you can do it. What's the next one? So you have a big block of chocolate of 10 kilograms. This would be classified where? 180610, 20, 31, 32, 90. Ah. Let's see, why is it not 180610? It's not in 180610 because it's not powder, very good, right? So this one, it cannot be because it's, it's powder. Here, it's other preparations in blocks, slabs or bars, weighting more than 2 kilograms. An hour's weighted how much? 10. Right? So this one very clearly falls in here, right? Why it couldn't be any of these two? Because to be classified here, it has to be a slab, block, slab or bar of less than 2 kilograms, right? Okay, let's go again. Next one. Ah, this one, one of my favorites, this is the Maltizers, right? Ah, this one, one of my favorites. This is the Maltesers, right? So packed with chocolate balls with malt filling eighty grams. Ready? Australia wants to win. Oh, no. What happened? Okay, let's take a look. I know exactly what happened. Is because you made the mistake of say, oh, this is filled. Then immediately you went there, right? No, this is what I told you, right? If if you are going to classify something under thirty-one, it has to meet all the conditions surrounding it, right? So it has to also meet this condition of being a block slab or bar of less than two kilograms. But it's a ball. So if it's a ball, it's not classified in there, right? I don't know if you have seen, you also have, it's very famous for Easter, you have chocolate bunnies. So chocolate bunnies does do not have the form of black slab or bars, then they would be classified under ninety as other. Yes, Saudi Arabia, please.
Thank you. But my question is, why is it included in the heading itself? Because I've seen that biscuits are excluded from this heading previously.
You mean, why is, why excluded?
Why are Maltesers included within the heading?
Oh. You remember, I told you, we have this system where we try to find a box where we're going to fit everything else that we are not able to fit somewhere else, right? So we do that typically through this category of other. So if you only see this other, you do not understand what it means, right? So you, the only way you understand what is classified under other is by looking at everything else which is within that heading. So what does it mean other? Is something which is not chocolate powder? Is something which is not the big blocks of more than two kilograms? It's something that is not the block slabs or bar of less than two kilograms. So what is left? What is left is something which is not powder, not blocks, et cetera, right? So for example, Maltesers because of the shape that they have, chocolate balls, they do not fit into any of these categories. It has cocoa, therefore it has to be classified here. You see, it's it's a residual type of definition we're gonna be making here. Again, if you go to the stores and you see the chocolate bunnies that are produced for Easter, same thing, right? Are they powder? No. Are they big blocks? No. Are they blocks like this, less than two kilograms? No. Then they have to be classified here. So this is one technique that we use in the HS to be able to find a classification for the products, even if they are not expressly mentioned. Okay, let's look at some of the other examples. Ah, sorry, we have a question in the chat. Ah, no. We don't. Okay, let's see the next one. Maybe the next one is easier. Is white chocolate a bar of a hundred grams? Are you ready? Come on, keep competing. Ah, good. Why? Why is it? Let's see. Look, same thing. If if the only thing you look at is this, there's no way you're gonna find that find that conclusion, right? We have here information which is given to us in the explanatory notes. And there is this part that tells us this heading does not include white chocolate, which is composed of cocoa butter, sugar and powdered milk. This is rather classified under heading seventeen oh four. Chapter seventeen is one where you have sugar and confectionery. That means candies, this type of of products, right? If you have biscuits and other baker's wares covered with chocolate, then they are classified under nineteen oh five. Again, unless you have access to this information, there is no way you are going to be able to understand that's the case, right? So one of the main lessons I want to teach you today is that if you are going to be working, trying to determine where to classify something, it is very important to have access to these explanatory notes. Okay, so for purposes of the HS, white chocolate is not chocolate and other food preparations. Okay, I can see white chocolate was very controversial. Let's continue. Oh, this one is nice. So it's a chocolate bar with caramel and nuts. So where do we classify that one? Here, some colleagues in the secretariat really, really wanna win. Ah, good. Question here from the legal point of view is how do we know if a chocolate is filled? And trust me, you're never gonna see chocolates in the same way after this class. How do we know? Well, there is this explanatory note here that tells us what is the definition of field, right? It says field, field means what? First of all, it it only applies to eighteen oh six thirty-one. So first of all, it has to be a a bar. If it's something like a little ball, like the Malteser we were seeing before, it doesn't meet the first condition. So it's it's not, even if it's filled, it will not be able to classify it here under thirty-one, right? So field means what? It's blocks, slabs or bars consisting and then you have to have a center composed of something which is not chocolate. It can be cream, crusted sugar, desiccated coconut fruit, fruit paste, liquids, marzipan nuts, nougat, caramel or combinations of these products which are then enrobed with chocolate. So you have a center, which is something which is not chocolate, and then you cover it all around with chocolate. Australia.
In that picture, it looks more like it was embedded throughout. It wasn't just like one nut covered around. It was broken up pieces throughout. Can we just look at that picture again?
Is the is the picture, Miss, you're a lawyer, right? Nope. No, it's actually in the center of the chocolate. No, we agree? Exhibit A. Did I convince you? Yes, right? Okay, so this one is a very good example of a field chocolate, right? Now, oh my God, this is ultimate nightmare for purposes of classification. So I don't know if you're familiar with these ones, Kinder Egg. They are banned in some countries. Like the US, I think they are banned. So it's dark chocolate on the outside, white chocolate on the inside, and then it has a little puzzle on the inside. In this case, it's a puzzle, so you can assemble a plastic helicopter toy. Okay? So question here is, is a bit more complicated. Question is which is the general interpretative rule that you would normally use to find the classification of this product? It's a composite type of product, right? Dark chocolate, white chocolate and the little puzzle with the helicopter. So you have at least two possible classifications. One of them would be as a chocolate. And the other one would be as a toy, right? Is it a toy or is it a chocolate? We have to find one classification, right? Okay, let's see, let's see what are the, remember the rules. GRI one was about finding the appropriate heading, but then because we have two or more, by definition, we are not there, right? It has to be somewhere else. Two A was with the incomplete, unfinished, et cetera, but that's not really what we're talking about. Two B sends us really to to three. Three A was about the more specific. So which one is more specific? A chocolate or a toy? Or a puzzle? None of them is more specific, so we need to go to three B and then under three B, what would be the question? You remember the rule? Is we need to find what gives the essential character? Is it the essential character of a chocolate or the essential character of a of a toy? How could possibly you demonstrate this if you have to go to a judge? Come on, you're lawyers. You're already thinking, no? You would only go to GRI three C if you fail with three B, but normally three B, we're able to solve it through three B, right? Okay, who says it's a chocolate? And who says it's a toy? So Australia, you say it's a chocolate. Why is it chocolate?
Because you have to, you eat the chocolate to get to the toy and it's also generally sold alongside other chocolates.
Yeah, that's a good argument, right? It's salt together with all the other chocolates. Do we have a mom? Mom, mom, buy me one, buy me one. Why? Well, because of the toy, right? You could also make the argument that is really a toy under the guise of a chocolate, right? Anyway, this is sorry, or a choking hazard, yeah. Again, in some countries, this is prohibited, right? Now, if this one is very interesting, because in the documents of the harmonized system, you actually have a concrete example of the use of GRI three B, which is precisely the Kinder Eggs. And they say that the essential character of this product would normally be considered to be the chocolate. But if you tell me, but look, you can make the argument that, no, it's really the toy. I I could also believe that, right? Again, not a mathematical exercise. It's something that is done by lawyers. Okay, but remember, we have to come to a conclusion, right? The rule tells us what to choose, but then what do we choose? So if we assume that chocolate is the essential character, where do we classify the Kinder Eggs? Okay, people are very nervous now. In reality, it's very easy, no? Okay, why, why does it need to be under eighteen oh six ninety? Well, if it's a chocolate, it has to be under eighteen oh six. Toys are classified under chapter ninety-five. If if we if we had the conclusion that this has to be considered to be a toy or it has the essential character of a toy, we would be looking somewhere else other than eighteen oh six, right? And then under the different options of eighteen oh six, is it cocoa powder? No. Is it a big block of more than two kilograms? No. Is it a bar? No. Therefore, it has to be under ninety, right? So it would be classified exactly like the little, this one is soft, the little Lindor chocolate, right? Okay, who brought a chocolate? Just show me your chocolates. I wanna see what you have. Okay, that one, Saudi Arabia, yours is what? Describe it and where would you classify it?
Okay, so I would probably say, I'm gonna cheat here. I'll just check the PDF. I'm probably gonna say it's eighteen oh, the one without the number, eighteen oh six point three.
Yes, but then under thirty, thirty, under three, you have thirty-one and thirty-two, so we have to choose thirty-one and thirty-two.
So it's thirty-two.
Okay, so that's not filled.
Not filled, no.
Okay. Good. Everybody agrees? Can you show it?
Do you need check? Should I put a picture in the in the chat?
Okay, who else has a chocolate? You would like to show? I have a question for you, just to give, get you into the whole production method. What happened if we had one which is bio? You know, from sustainable farmers from Ecuador. Just to say something, would that make a difference or not? For for purposes of the HS, it doesn't make a difference. Because in terms of the objective characteristic, that's not something you would be able to determine and and confirm, right? If you go to the airport now, at some point was very popular, you have the pink chocolate. Have you seen the pink chocolate? Come on, you go through the airport, what do you do? You have to go to buy chocolates, no? So there is one, so it's actually a very rare variety of cocoa, which is pink. So it is chocolate, but it's pink. Would you still classify it under eighteen oh six? But if it has cocoa, the answer would be yes, right? It doesn't say anywhere that it has to be brown, right? So you see the issue, right? So even in the area of chocolates, you might have innovations like those ones that you may have these questions, but in reality, you always have to be able to find one and only one classification. And then what about my chocolates? Based on the ingredients and everything you saw, let me see, the only thing which is different is this notion that it has purple cornflakes. Come on, don't give up. Give you a few seconds to join. Okay, let's go. Oh, no. How do we know if my chocolates are filled or not filled? Okay, let me see if I can actually draw right here, here. Okay, please use your imagination. Let's suppose this is a chocolate bar. Now, come on, it's actually beautiful, no? Okay. So you have this. We said that we have some situations where they could actually be filled, right? So a field means that it's something like this, right? So it's actually on the inside and then it's enrobed, covered with chocolate. But the ones which are not filled could also be like what? You have chocolates where you have little pieces which are scattered across. Is this filled or not filled? This is not filled. In this particular case, you have the purple conflicts which are scattered across the chocolate, so my chocolates are not filled. Right? So that's why this is the correct. The correct answer. Now. Once I know the classification of my product. This is fantastic for me, right? Because I can go to the website of any of your countries. And just by typing in the code, I am able to know. How, what's the duty I have to pay, what's internal taxes, what is the licenses? What are the requirements? Et cetera, right? So the HS code is extremely important for these purposes, because then you're able to find that information that you need. To be able to export in, in all the different countries, right? And then that's why for purposes of Eeping, if I can start making the. The link is extremely important, because then you are able. If you have the right code and it's attached to the right set of information, then you're able to find the, what you are looking for. Now, let's see who won. Who won? Andy, who is Andy? Raise your hand. Oh no, it's changing, what's happening? So you have Andy, Brown the Broken and Eleonore. I was once in a class that I, who was it? It was a, I don't know, it was one of the pop stars, that one, but Andy, who is Andy? Ah, there you go. Do you have experience with customs before from the classification? No. So that means I'm a fantastic professor, no? Ah, okay. He said he has experience with chocolates. Anyway, so the exercise was just to give you a real life example that even a relatively simple product. May not necessarily be straightforward to classify in, in practice, right? I still have a couple of old things I would like to tell you, but then I'm gonna give the floor now to Audrey. So she can explain how the HS codes are actually attached. Once you provide your notifications. Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you, Roy. I don't know if there's anyone else who could present HS codes in a more fun manner, so thank you. We want more of this now, I would like to move on to other products. I'll take, you know, pour a coffee and ask you for other examples, but now we have Audrey with us. I think we can, we should also bring it back to the work of the committee, but maybe let's hear from Audrey. And then go back to some of the issues that are of more direct relevance and how we apply this for the TBT notifications.
Good afternoon, everyone. So I'm Audrey Giroux, I'm an information management specialist in the language. Documentation Services Division. And I'm working in the section that is responsible for documents online and the central registry of notification. So to liaise with what has been exposed by Roy with the HS. This is also interesting to have in mind that this challenges to identify the codes, the products in the notification using codes. Different classification on specific terminologies. These challenges have also consequences on the quality of the search as well. So how to ensure a reliable and efficient search by product if they cannot be identified properly in the documents? So in this presentation. In this presentation, I will try to explain how the central registry of notification is involved in these questionings. And how the secretariat ongoing initiative about the product could address them. So let's start with a short introduction of the CRN. So the CRN is the Central Registry of Notifications and was established in nineteen ninety five, based on the decision on notification procedures. This decision gave to CRN a specific mandate. That relies on two main assignments. So the first one is to be. The official and legal repository of notifications. So that means that the CRN registers different elements of the information provided and the measures by the member concerned. As their purpose, the trade coverage, the requirement under which they have been notified. The second assignment is to inform the members of their notification obligations. So the CRN informs each member annually of the regular notification obligations. To which that member will be expected to respond in the course of the following year. But it also draws the attention of individual members to regular notification requirements which remain unfulfilled. So the CRN can clearly be seen as a tool to ensure transparency between the members. All the information that is registered is registered in a specific dedicated database. On which rely a certain number of WTO information system that enable the retrieval of the notification. So you have documents online with the specific notification search module. But you have also Eeping and more recently the notification portal. So if we focus on TBT notification, when a member submits a TBT notification, what is happening? As members, this is through the different status on your dashboard that you can perceive the journey of the notification you previously submitted. So you draft your document and once completed, it is marked as submitted. But then between the submission and the distribution on Eeping. The process is maybe a little unknown to you. So. TBT notifications are submitted now to the CRN through an online submission system. Every day, CRN. Receives notifications and registers them by creating a record based on a unique CRN ID. We also enter metadata describing the content of the notification, so the requirement under which they are submitted. The trade coverage, the possible attachments the notification can have. And the communication date. As CRN, we cannot anticipate the number of notification we received every day, because we do not only receive TBT notification. But the key element in the delivery of service in the CRN is immediacy. Divisions require review of notifications to be carried out in a timely manner. And this is especially the case for TBT or even a space notification with the specific timeline and the sixty days of comments. So a CRN is first in the chain, documents cannot be delayed, whatever the reason. So then our TBT colleagues are informed of the notification viability as soon as it is registered in our database. At that stage. The division verifies the data consistency, it generates the notification in a word file based on the data provided. Then. A document symbol is assigned to the notification. It is sent to translation in the two other languages. While the original document is sent for official distribution in documents online and then Eeping. So one of the big challenge we also facing. When we register the notification in CRN also relies on the identification of the product concern. And the current situation is quite mixed. In the notification receive, information about the product varies a lot from one notification to the other. So based on the terminology available, we may have documents containing exhaustive information with a complete description. We may have code assigned, HS or ICS or both. And we also receive documents for which the information is more limited and the description, the product shorter. And where we couldn't find any codes. So in this context. I have a couple of examples here. So you can see that for this first notification, we have a, a description of the product concern. In another one, you have different codes provided to describe the product, both HS and ICS. And in the last example, we only have one HS code provided. Without any description. So in this context. This is difficult to provide a harmonious search by product. And then sometime back to try to address this and improve the search. Get more structured information about the product, it was agreed that CRN could try to add codes if possible. If possible means that we still need some. Details about the product described in a notification. And we, we need the product to be, to be easily identified as well. So to distinguish the codes we add from the ones provided by the members. We have an internal feature, a tick box to indicate the codes are added by us. So here there is no legal ground, this is done only for search and retrieval purposes. So for TBT notification, we try to assign ICS codes in priority. And we can say that only now few TBT notification remain without any ICS codes. So to give you some figures, last year in twenty twenty two, we processed around. Three thousand and nine hundred notifications, TBT notification. Forty nine percent were provided with HS and seventy five with ICS. Additional codes from secretariat represented for HS two percent and for ICS fifty percent. So you can see that we are also struggling with the HS classification as well. TBT notification issued without any codes represented only six percent. So we are aware that this process is far from being perfect. Because yes, we are also limited by the complexity of the HS classification. That is why. The idea of a common product related terminology has arisen to enable a good search. So in this context, where the search by products through our different information system could clearly be improved. Some internal discussions were led and come to the idea that the development of a common product. Related vocabulary for WTO could help. So this is a cross divisional initiative that started some time ago and that is also in connection with the DOL replacement project. Because in this project, we are also currently in the phase of rearranging the control list we use in docs, in documents online to, to tag the, the documents. So by control list, I'm referring to our list of keywords, document types, etc., and of course, products is part of it. So the purpose of this initiative is clear, it's to facilitate the tagging of the product in notification, but also improve the search functions available for the users. So why a dictionary? Our objective here with this initiative is to develop a collections of terms as flexible as possible. To handle terms in different nature or context. So we can have sheep, computers or ITA products, for example. That could be terms at the same time in the dictionary. To achieve that, we decided to use as a basis the HS classification. And extract product names from the HS code's description. And explanatory notes provided with the objective to simplify it. So in the way we started developing it, terms are all mapped to HS codes. This dictionary initiative is also trying to address the question of product categories and cross cutting categories. While keeping in mind that broad product categories. And more specific products should remain consistent with each other. So that's why we will have in the dictionary some categories that could be overlapping. We can have food versus meat, medicines versus chemicals, plastics versus food contact materials, for example. And to develop a collection as complete as possible, we will also associate synonyms to the product terms. So let's take. A concrete example to show the feature we. Consider. Let's take meat and offal poultry as the, the example. So meat and offal poultry is a term part of the dictionary. Based on the HS description, it could be mapped to a list of HS codes. So you can see that codes under zero two zero seven or sixteen zero two. Can be associated to that term. So whatever the meat is fresh or preserved, prepared, etc., it refers to the same term in the dictionary. As terms and product categories are overlapping in the dictionary. That means those HS codes mapped to the term meat and offal poultry. Are also mapped to over potential product terms. Like meat or food product or poultry product. So if you search by meat, you should be able to retrieve notification tagged as meat and offal poultry as well. Then to get a vocabulary as complete as possible, synonyms like poultry meat. Or poultry offal, for example, are identified and added to. Meaning that if you search also by poultry meat, you will be able to retrieve notification tagged as meat and offal poultry as well. So to update you on the state of progress of this initiative. The collection of terms related to agricultural product is drafted and currently under review by colleagues from the committee's concern. We also have synonyms associated. And the mapping to the HS code is done. So the same work now is required for the non agricultural products, but the list of product concern is much longer. And I would say much more difficult to comprehend and develop, so. This will take time, sometime. Following this, the question also is to how we can integrate this dictionary in the whole notification pro, process and in our information tool. What we foresee as a first step is to integrate. At the CRN stage. Because it will, it will also be a way for us to properly test it. So if we take our notification process from submission to search. How can this be implemented? On member's side, submission step will. Remain unchanged. The product can be described using the free text search or can be identified with HS, ICS or both. Once registered in CRN, CRN could tag the notification with product names taken from the dictionary. And if it works as we think it could work, based on the product term selected. We would also have a shortlist of HS codes, those mapped to the product term in the dictionary to make HS tagging easier. On the user's side. When it comes to the search, if you search on DOL or eventually in Eeping. By bovine meat, animal product or food products. System will be able to provide you with this notification submitted in the first place by the members. So as a conclusion, I would say that there is still a long way to go, but we may envisage some further evolutions as well to this initiative. And a possible direct integration to Eeping. On the user's side, by allowing a direct access to the product dictionary to select product terms, to configure your alerts and to track products you're interested in. And on the submission side. To allow members to select appropriate terms from the dictionary when they drive their notification. And also as product names will be mapped to HS codes. It will be a way to assist them in the selection of codes to describe the product concerned. So. This was a quick overview of what we are working on and what we try to achieve, so. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Audrey, for sharing with us the sort of in secretariat initiative to assist in the process of improving the quality of information and complete through information notifications and their tracking by all stakeholders. Are there questions or comments on what Audrey just presented? Mary Ann, you ask?
Thank you for your presentation, that was very interesting, Audrey. And I appreciate hearing the, the work that you are doing there at the central registry for notifications. I guess my question is, you mentioned at the beginning of your presentation that. that each each word that is in a notification in terms of the product coverage, it will be assigned an HS code. And I wonder um if is that accurate? Did I understand that correctly? And it's so interesting because I think about, I have to make a comment that when when uh we're notifying as an inquiry point or the notification authority, however, members have it laid out individually, um assigning an HS code for a product that is not yet tangible is very interesting. Um but so anyway, I just wanted to mention that and um I guess to hear about the challenges or some some comment on that and if I understood correctly about uh I I see or HS codes for every product.
So yes, the idea is to to have codes mapped to uh the the product terms we will have in the dictionary. So this should be seen more as a guidance. Um because still, uh even if we are doing it at the CRN level, if the product is not very clear and very specific, it will be still very difficult to assign a six-digit HS, but at least at the submission level, it could help to see, okay, you have a shortlist because you will choose this product term for the dictionary. These are the codes associated to that term. So maybe it will be easier for you to try the codes you need. But it will be, yeah, more um an assistance that's something that will be um that will be very, very accurate, I would say. And we will, of course, uh first need to test it to see how it goes, if it can be be used as such.
Thank you, Audrey. Are there any other questions? Uh yes, please.
Thank you for Roy. Uh since classification is uh it it looks like is a world of where lawyers are very active. So um if uh does it add to complexity the fact that there can be many arguments in terms of, you know, advocating for one classification versus others and the interests that are behind them? Um do classification ever change? Is that possible? I just, it I I'm curious because we are in the committee also finding ways of being very specific about um notification and the product, but I'm thinking about new products um in terms of goods or those that Mariana is referencing and and the interest behind and the the world of lawyers um considering the mix. Thank you.
That that's a perfect introduction because I wanted to continue dealing with some of those updates as well. Perhaps just before I do that, uh a couple of thoughts. Uh one, that yes, because you are dealing with a world of lawyers and interpretations. But first of all, let let's not exaggerate, like ninety percent of the products, it's very straightforward. No, you're classifying rice, it's rice, rice is rice, uh a car is a car. Well, maybe yes, maybe not, if they can drive by themselves and then you start getting into different type of of situations, right? But let's say for ninety percent of the products, it's relatively straightforward. But we do have to acknowledge that there is a certain number of products where it's not so evident where they should be classified. You may even have situations where one country classifies in one place and because it's a different interpretation, another country classifies in a different place. That happens a lot, for example, with car parts. For example, because it happens that car parts can not only be used for cars, they can also be used to produce many other things. Many electrical components now nowadays can be used to produce all sorts of different different things, no? Uh now, the solution that they have found in the HS is every certain number of years, they look at what are the new patterns of trade. If a product is important enough and is giving them enough headaches, uh then they try to create new categories and then they try to agree on what those new categories are. It it doesn't mean that the products were not classified before, because as we said, they have to be classified somewhere. But then they create new categories to make it easier to identify. So let me talk very quickly about that. And then at the end, I come back to one of the issues because I've been explaining to you how it works for purposes of customs when they are classifying one product. But then we have not discussed what happens in the WTO and what is it that we're trying to achieve with the notifications, because it's a different exercise. We're not, we're not doing the same thing, no? So let me just share my screen. Here. So let's talk very quickly about the amendments. So these amendments uh take place more or less every four, every five years. Uh and again, here is is interesting, depending on whether you are from customs or whether you are from the trade policy area, you call them differently. In the world of trade policy, we tend to call it by the year in which they entered into force. So we talk about HS ninety six, HS two thousand two, et cetera. In the world of customs, they like to call it by the number of the amendment. So the first amendment, the second amendment, the third amendment, e- et cetera, no? I don't know if if you have ever talked to your colleagues from customs, but then you may face that kind of like little uh disconnection, but then it's relatively easy to to overcome, no? Now, let me show you some examples of goods that they decided to basically clarify where they should be classified. One of them had to do with these electronic textiles. So this is basically textiles that have some LED lighting. They may have even speakers, heaters, uh telephone ports, uh et cetera. This one I've never seen, but apparently they thought it was important enough to to make sure they would be classified somewhere. And then basically they clar- clarified one of the notes to make sure that they this would still be classified uh as clothes. There was also a big issue with respect to edible insects. Uh insects, depending on where you come from, in some countries it's very normal to eat them, in others it's not. Uh and then there was a whole question as to whether they should be classified. Uh and then for some countries, they were considered to be meat. Meat of other animals. In other countries, they say, look, meat has to be a certain type of animal. An insect cannot have meat. So even there, they had these agreements on where to classify them, and now they just created uh and and expanded one of the uh headings zero four ten to make sure that they are classified in there. This one you can actually see, if you go to the supermarket, you're able to find like chips and stuff like that made from from insects, no? Uh so and Fao thought this was very important for purpose of of monitoring the production and trade in this very important source of um proteins, which they think is going to be even more important as we go into the future. You remember the drones? This one was a very big issue. Uh how do you deal with uh and then the word they used in the HS was not uh drone, they used unmanned aircraft. And then here you include the ones we're thinking about, plus the bigger ones as well. And if you see the distinction they made is depending on whether they are designed for the carriage of passengers. So I guess we are future-proof, so bigger ones work and actually take people can be classified there under eighty eighty eight oh six ten. Then you have two other categories, one for those which are remote control flight only. So that means you can only fly it with a remote control. And then there's a distinction between, uh sorry, depending on the weight. Not more than two hundred and fifty grams, two hundred and fifty, et cetera. This one is interesting because in many countries, the definition of the ones that people can fly without a license is those that are less than two hundred and fifty grams. And in fact, if you see the the leaders in the market are two hundred and forty nine grams typically, so they adapt, of course, to to the rules. And there was also a big issue in terms of the camera. You know, what happens if they have a camera or not? Are they a flying camera or they or they are they a drone or not? That last aspect, they did not really clarify, so some of them may still have cameras here. And then there are some that can actually fly autonomously, and then those would be classified more under the ninety one, ninety two, ninety three, uh et cetera, no? I I did not put it here, but there was a big issue in terms of the new products that people use for tobacco and smoking. Uh before, it used to be that you only had uh s- uh let's say cigarettes. But then you have all these new products that were developed with technology. One of them has to do with vaping, so all the vaping type of products were brought together under chapter twenty four, together with the cigarettes. And then there are also other products that have rapid heating. So what they do is they they have like a little cartridge of tobacco that you input. Uh and then the there's an apparatus that has rapid heating and then it releases vapor. And then the question was whether those were cigarettes or not, because a cigarette, by definition, you light it up, you burn it, produces a smoke, and then these apparatus are are basically designed not to burn. Uh and then they said at the end, it doesn't matter, they just brought together all of them under chapter uh twenty four. So this is just to give you uh an idea of different types of products. Uh and then this keeps happening all the time, and right now they are discussing the products that are going to be classified for the new version of the nomenclature that is scheduled to take uh or enter into force on the first of January of twenty twenty seven, which sounds like very far away, but in reality, in principle, they have to finish with the categories this year. So they can go through all the process to be able to implement them. Now, this last thing I I wanted to show you is it it can be quite tricky to find out you have the codes that you are used to in one version of the nomenclature, they may change. So how do you know what's the in the new version or how do you actually go back and track where to find it? So for that, uh our colleagues from statistics developed this tool, which is actually quite nice. It's called the HS tracker. So you type a code and then you're actually able to see across the different versions how it changes or not. It gives you access to the different uh legal instruments we developed together with the WCO. So you can actually have ac- access. Well, this one is by subscription, but you can find where to go and find the the relevant information in the WCO page, so it's actually directly linked to to that. Uh before I give you back the floor, uh Sarah, I just wanted to 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 have a thought with you. What is it that we're doing with the notifications? Now, why do we include the HS codes? And I think this is a very important question. Uh in some cases, in some agreements, we do it because the measure itself is defined in terms of HS codes. Right? So for example, if you are dealing, if you were dealing with SPS type of measures, because you are dealing with imports typically by definition, they immediately in the measure itself, they identify the HS code, so it's easier to notify. But I think one thing which is very, very unique of TBT is that you have these technical regulations behind the border, so that connection is not so evident. Uh and then, as you saw, the the, let's say, the type of exercise to classify one single product can be quite challenging, can be quite difficult. The one thing that I think is important to bear in mind is that we're what you what we're doing here is not classifying products. What we're doing here is trying to allow the users of the information to find it. And then you have two possible types of mistakes, right? Mistake number one is that you basically provide a quote and it was the wrong quote. Perhaps it was too expansive, uh but still the people who were looking for it were able to find it. Let's call that error number one. And then, but then you also have error number two, which is you didn't put any code and then nobody's able to find anything because there's no code. Uh and I think the question for you is which one is worse? And I would make the argument that error number two is worse. So I don't know if if and that's I think why we're trying to find solutions or even if it's only indicative, even if it's not perfect, to try to allow the people to find the information and then they decide if this is relevant for them uh or not. So we have been working together with CRN and some of the other places in the house to try to have this kind of like dictionary of terms. So some of them are very recurrent. For example, if you look into the HS for computers, it doesn't appear because it turns out that the term for them is automatic data processing machines. But then we know, and then if we know, we try to make it and define it in a way that is easier for people to to find. Now, of course, this is not, it's easier said than done. It's for some products, it's very straightforward, for others not. But then I think if we all start working together on that and you also put your thinking caps and we start working together, I think we really have the potential to help the final users who really need to be able to find the information, which I think is the goal of the exercise. Thanks.
Thank you, Roy, and Audrey, and also for that final observation, because what is our ultimate goal is to ex- uh facilitate exchange of information among members regarding literature development. And how can this HS code and product dictionary exercise contribute to that? Uh but let's see, I I think I see Chile.
Gracias, Sarah. Eh quería agradecer.
Thank you. I would like to offer my thanks to the two presenters. The fact is that Roy's last comment reassured me somewhat because I imagine how difficult it was to get our agency to commit to this obligation to notify. And now that we've got the codes here, everything's going to be quite complicated. At any rate, I have to say that today's work was very interesting with regards to classification. Listening to the presentation and the exercise, I think we've all seen that this is an area where we need to work together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alex. Uh any other reflections or suggestions for our way forward regarding uh improving on product coverage information? Yes, please.
Sorry, ju- just to make another comment, uh responding also to Chile, uh which is something you said. You do have experts in your governments who are ultimate experts in the classification of all these products and can help you. And they work for your customs, right? So I think it's also important to bear in mind that you have the possibility to have some form of collaboration, operation, I don't know, uh I know collaboration and cooperation is easier said than done, sometimes can be quite tricky. But then just remember that it might be worth trying to establish some form of connection with them. So if you have questions, I mean, they can help you and then they will be on your side uh and understand your interest and and might be able to guide you much better sometimes than we can uh here in in Geneva, no? Thanks.
Thank you, Roy. Uh Vex.
Thank you. Thank you both. It's very interesting. Um in in our case in TBT and to certain extent in SPS as well, um it has to do with determining coverage. So it is a a big issue for us to uh for stakeholders actually to know uh what the coverage of the measure is, because that will also lead uh, you know, for for stakeholders to determine whether they need to comply or just or not. And um and it's it's not a uh, there is not a perfect ac- answer as to how countries um can really determine that, depending on what the measure is about, even the objectives, and it is complex, uh but having um tools um such as, you know, HS codes, they may, they may fit perfectly in the policy intentions that the country is pursuing. They may not, but in in any case, it will be helpful, I believe. Um but yeah, coverage is a big issue for us. And even in SPS, if if the H code is indicated, but eh there are doubts about coverage, that will not be enough. There are also questions there. Um but definitely it's it's a good tool to for countries to, if they get a better understanding and participation in um in, you know, in learning about classification and and to the extent possible, indicating in in the notification format. It's good.
Just wondering if there's any action on the chat, uh or that's from before? Yeah. Okay, I actually had a question. I'm not sure if it's to Roy or maybe to delegations. Um um let's say a regulation is developed, uh and it addresses addresses a group of products for which, let's say, no HS codes have been um identified. Uh what happens when those goods arrive at the border and they have to be verified for compliance? Um on what basis are usually the customs officials who are at the border um letting go a product or not uh with or without checking compliance with uh a a technical regulation? I don't know if uh anyone has insights on.
That's a question for the delegations, I think. Because I it really depends on how you do it. I know in some countries, basically, the regulators coordinate with customs and then customs put it in their database. And and again, the way it works in that, if if customs is going to be controlling something, it is going to be based on the HS code. There is no other way they're gonna do it. They type in the code, they see the code, and then after they see the code, then they see what the requirements are. Right? So I, I don't know. That's a question. It's actually a mystery. Sarah and I, we keep talking about this issue. And we would really like to know how you do it in, in practice. Because we can have all these assumptions, but then I, I think only you know how it works in practice, no? Uh, there was another question that was made in terms of what happens with intangible type of goods. When it comes to the HS, only the tangible goods can be classified. Uh, there is only even one where there was this big discussion that has to do with electricity. So is electricity a tangible good or not? And then some people get very um, let's say, uh, scientific and they say you have electrons which are jumping from one atom to the other. And therefore there is a, some form of a substance which is moving and others did not agree to that. And when it comes to electricity is the only code in the HS, which is basically voluntary. So some countries apply it, some countries do not apply it. Uh, when it comes to software before, when it was actually being imported in a carrier media, so you would classify the CD or the floppy disk or the flash drive. But then nowadays that doesn't really happen. And many of these products on top are imported really via the internet. So customs never get to see them, right? So there's a different discussion on, on that.
I was gonna ask you, when you were providing the example of e-textiles, that I've heard that term for, and I think it was during COVID times that it was developed, a very successful um, industry, um, a, a very successful company, they sell just the design and they call that e-textiles. So just the design of the clothes are sold. And apparently it's a very successful initiative, business initiative. Uh, that wouldn't be tangible, right? It's just a, and, and it is all in e-commerce. That's not classified. And they use that term, e-textiles.
If, if you want to take it even further, you have the 3D printers. So you're able to buy the plan for producing something. Uh, you pay for that, you download it and then you start producing, right? But then imagine I am, I downloaded the plans for a chair. I import the plans, but I am not importing chairs, right? I produce the chairs in my own country, right? So there's all sorts of these questions that come up, but for the HS is relatively straightforward. If it's not a tangible good, you cannot classify. It has to be tangible, but with the exception of electricity I, I mentioned, no?
Well, this actually ties in with our interesting thematic session coming up tomorrow morning on regulatory cooperation between members on intangible, intangible digital products. So.
Uh, but sorry, uh, it would be remiss of me not to mention, this is being discussed in the WCO as well. And there is one proposal to try to create one category for this type of intangible goods, but this is a bit controversial. So you, you, I think you need to follow with your colleagues covering WCO to see what's the status of that discussion.
Thank you, Roy. Um, are there any other questions or remarks? Um, uh, maybe I just wanted to make a few little references to Eping, just catching up on a few things. Um, Roy mentioned these amendments to accommodate um, developments in new products like e-textiles and drones and vaping products. And so, and this is also an area where there's a lot of regulatory activity, actually, new activity and new notifications. And just to tie into something I announced this morning, but in case you missed it, uh, Roy mentioned that we now have the new, newest version from 2022 and Eping was a, a very, a version behind. So now it's been updated to the latest. Uh, so hopefully you will be able to find these new products uh, in there as well. And just to say that also benefiting from this HS tracker and you work of our statistics colleagues, there's a concordance table behind, in the back, behind the scenes. So even if you search for something with the latest version, it will also grab anything that sort of connects with through the older version. So there's, you don't need to know the details, but you're, um, it's okay to just base yourself on one version and the system will create the linkages for searching um, with previous versions. Um, I don't know if that was more confusing or not. Uh, and also just to connect with something Audrey said, sometimes CRN colleagues are adding HS or ICS codes to notifications where they believe there might be a clear connection with a code. These are not added to the official notification, of course, and they are not visible in the notification uh, you, you see in Eping. But they are there in the background and they help with search. So in case you wondered how we benefit from it, we benefit from it. Uh, but it's not uh, visible so that we don't create confusion in terms of um, sort of what the member decided to put. But if you wonder, sometimes you pick something up that wasn't in the notification, it might be what was done in the background by Audrey and the CRN team, and thanks for that. Uh, I think we've uh, it is visible in Docs Online apparently, but not in Eping. So I think I'd like to thank our colleagues for the very informative session. Uh, I think it was a fantastic opportunity to learn more about HS codes. So we will complete for, conclude for this afternoon. And just to remind you about the thematic sessions tomorrow morning, starting at ten, but also for those interested, the hands-on in-person sessions in room B. And again, please contact us if you want to join for just some, for more information. So thank you very much and see you tomorrow.